On record.
Call to order the City of Lincoln City Special City Council Meeting, Monday, August 5th, 2019 at 6:00 PM. Ask for a roll call.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Councilors Casper here, Counselor Hinton.
Here.
Counselor Hoagland.
Here.
Counselor Coos.
Here.
Counselor Mark.
Here.
Counselor Parsons.
Here.
Please join me for Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for joining us tonight, special meeting and council that you could make the arrangements. We have, at this time, one agenda item. I guess first there's comments from public, anything that's not on the agenda. If there's any public comments that anybody would like to raise, but not having anything to do with appeal. Okay?
So on that agenda item, can we only talk about the issue being appealed?
Right. Correct. So, all right, seeing none, and we'd move then to the public hearing. And the public hearing is, I'll go with this. I now open the public hearing for files APP 2019-04 and 2019-05, appeals from a decision of the Planning Commission upholding the Planning Director's decision approving a geologic hazard report for construction of a single-family dwelling on a lot in the coastal erosion zone. The property that is the subject of the appeals is located at 2461 Southwest Anchor Avenue in the R15 single-family residential zone. The property owner is Lee Hollinger. The two appellants are Becky Morfit and Michael Kimbrell. We will hear the two appeals de novo as a consolidated public hearing. Conducting the hearing de novo means that the council will accept new or additional testimony or evidence in addition to evidence already in the record. Are there any objections to the council's jurisdiction? Hearing none. Counselors, are there any abstentions or disqualifications based on conflict of interest, personal bias, or ex parte communications? Seeing and hearing none. Is there any objection to the participation of any counselor? Hearing none. The following is a list of substantive criteria that are applicable to this hearing. And Lindsay, I think you were going to read those.
Good evening, Council. Lindsay Zehmle, Planning Director of Lincoln City. The substantive criteria for tonight's consideration is Lincoln City Municipal Code 1704030, compliance to the general provisions, 1747020, development in identified hazard areas, and Lincoln City Municipal Code 1776040, administrative provisions for appeals.
Thank you. Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed to the applicable substantive criteria just described, or to other criteria that you believe apply to the subject of this hearing. Any person may raise an issue either by testifying in person or by delivering a letter to the city council not later than the close of record of this hearing. Failure within that time is failure within that time to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to give the council an opportunity to respond to the issue will preclude an appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. May we have the staff report?
Yes. So, on April 8th, 2019, the city received a complete application for geotech report and additional materials requested by staff and deemed it complete. The, I myself issued a notice of decision as required under Municipal Code 1776020 on April 15th, and that notice triggered a 12-day appeal period under 1776040. The appellant, Kimbrell, provided an appeal request form and made the required payment. That appeal went to the Planning Commission. During the public process for the Planning Commission appeal, appellant Moff- Morfit testified on record and made herself an additional person in the case. The Planning Commission heard the appeal on June 4th, considered testimony and submitted materials, and made a motion at the request of the appellant to keep the record open for an additional seven days. The Planning Commission meeting minutes and materials from June 4th are included in the packet as Exhibit C. On June 18th, the Planning Commission closed the public hearing and passed a motion to uphold the decision. On July 2nd, the commission adopted the final order. The Planning Commission's meeting minutes for June 18th and July 2nd, as well as the final order, are included in your packet as well. On July 3rd, this department's staff provided mailed notice of that decision to the parties of record, as well as all neighboring properties within 250 feet. On July 12th, Michael Kimbrell filed the timely appeal of the Planning Commission's decision, and on July 12th, Becky Morfit filed the timely appeal of the Planning Commission's decision. The Kimbrell appeal is found as Exhibit E, and the Morfit appeal is found as Exhibit F in your packets. The U, City Council, decided on July 29th to take the hearing as de novo, allowing additional testimony and any additional information that may not have been included in the previous appeal hearing in front of the Planning Commission. On July 30th, I worked to complete in the staff report and added additional information that was not part of the Planning Commission's consideration, including the Priest maps and 2009 LiDAR data that is referenced in the Municipal Code 17470. In addition, you also have the complete meeting packets from June 18th. I recognize that is a large packet of 144 pages. That does include the original geotechnical report and submitted documents for building permits for the site. So, the LCMC 1776040BNC addresses appeals from the decision of a planning commission. It reads as follows, "The decision of a planning commission concerning a quasi-judicial land use matter may be appealed to the city council by party of the hearing by filing an appeal within 10 calendar days of the mailing of order." The notice of appeal filed with the city shall contain the information outlined in subsection C. For purposes of the section, party refers to the applicant and any person who appeared earlier in writing at the hearing. Both appeals being heard tonight are submitted by a party. The Director's decision that was originally made and upheld by the Planning Commission was made based upon the requirement of the submitted geotechnical report to meet the standards and analysis of Municipal Code 1747020B as required. The report is also supplemented by a review and evaluation of the proposed pile and retaining wall design and recommendations for alternatives that were dated March 15th, a plan review letter dated January 25th, and site conditions updated letter dated April 8th, 2019. The project and the geotechnical report was approved subject to all conditions, recommendations, and observations contained in the report. Per Lincoln City Municipal Code 1747020B, a geological hazard report must include the following information. My decision is based upon the report having this information in it and on page, starting on page packet six and going through to the top of page packet eight, I've summarized the, I have actually copied verbatim the code that is required in Municipal Code. That is required in the Municipal Code for geotechnical report. It requires a site description, description of the fronting beach, analysis of erosion flooding potential, and assessment of potential reactions to erosion episodes, and recommendation, professional recommendations from the geotechnical engineer. Since the Municipal Code requires the above information to be submitted for consideration and review during the development process, based upon the complete and submitted information, I found that the Hollinger geotechnical report complied with the requirements of 1747020B. It should be noted that geotechnical hazard reports are, must be prepared by an Oregon licensed engineering geologist, aside from the completeness determination. The only real, the only discretionary decision the Director has under 1747020 is in determining the location of the bluff and corresponding setback per the formula as set forth in paragraph D. The bluff setback, no bluff setback is required for public infrastructure, beachfront protective structures, or natural means of beach protection. The footprint of any other new structure or any horizontal addition requiring at least one footing in ocean bluff areas must be set back from the bluff a distance of at least 60 times the annual erosion rate, which is determined by the geotechnical analysis, plus five feet. The bluff for this purpose shall be determined by the city through inspections of aerial photos, the most recent LiDAR data, and the dividing line between the active and high-risk erosion zones identified in the 2004 Priest maps. If the Planning Director cannot determine the location of a bluff, the geotechnical analysis provided at the applicant's expense shall determine the appropriate site for the structure if one exists. Because the referenced evidence for determining the bluff was not in record of the Planning Commission decision, I included in Exhibit G the following evidence. A, most recent LiDAR data, which was flown and established in 2009, the 2004 Priest map dividing line, and a combined map that shows both the Priest map and the LiDAR data. Based upon the information in Exhibit G, the site visit made by the Director in review of the ortho photos, the Director's decision was that the bluff is at 90 feet elevation based upon the technical information and analysis provided in the report. The Planning Commission upheld the Director's decision. Being that this is a de novo hearing, no deference is to be afforded to my direct decision as well as the Planning Commission's decision. You as a council get and have the opportunity to consider all evidence. One of the appellants raises an issue of whether the topography in the report and associated plans accurately depict the bluff location and the corresponding setback line. The appellant notes that 8 to 10 feet of the top of the bluff will be removed, or is proposed to be removed, for the establishment and footings and construction of the home. The city is to determine the location of the bluff per paragraph D quoted previously. The grading plan shows two bluff locations, and that is found in Exhibit I, page 99. We reached out to the Mr. Glass in regards to the site plan showing two bluff locations, one at 100 feet and one at 90 feet. And that email and his response is included in your materials. However, the 100-foot bluff edge is the current bluff edge as documented by Mr. Glass. The 90-foot bluff edge is the edge after the 10-foot excavation for the daylight basement and footings and pilings. So, let's see here. One of the appellants has raised here and below concern that the bluff at 90 feet is an altered bluff edge. Planning staff has in the prior taken the position that there are no code requirements in 1747 that are limiting the construction of a structure to the existing grade on-site. Therefore, staff has found the application and review of the geotechnical analysis compiled with the requirements of the section was approved. It should be noted that construction methods are available to establish a daylight basement and excavate into the bluff, establishing a supportive structural system on-site. The applicant's geologists address this in the record and can be found on packet page 11. There is, however, another possible interpretation as this relates to 1747020D. The appellant suggests that the setback must be measured from the unaltered bluff. While certainly construction techniques may require excavation, the setback from the bluff must be respected. The language of the code speaks to the city determination of the bluff by review of existing aerial photos, LiDAR data, and Priest maps. The language of the code does not require the city to determine the bluff, location of the bluff, from review of the appellant's proposed grading plans. That is a future condition of the property where the appellant, applicant, sorry, would like the bluff to be located. Again, the city determines the location of the bluff. The code states that only if the Planning Director cannot determine the location does the geotechnical analysis get to determine that. The city council must make this interpretation of the code tonight. The council must review any record and new evidence submitted and make the proper application of the evidence in the record to the applicable law. Council's decision will have the effect of affirming, reversing, or may modify the decision below. A notice of decision will be provided to all parties in the hearing within five working days of the date of the final decision. And that decision is also appealable. Staff recommends that the city council conduct the public hearing, weigh the evidence provided in the staff report and exhibits. Council is charged with making the proper application of the law to the evidence that is on record. After deliberation, the city council must decide whether to affirm, reverse, or modify the Planning Commission's decision. That concludes my staff report. I am available for any questions.
Counsel, any questions of staff?
I just, I'm trying to formulate my question. I have a couple and if, and one is just curiosity, which is there was mention of a four-foot retaining wall. Do you have any idea how long that's been in place?
That's on-site existing?
That's how I read it, and I can't, I didn't write down what page it's on, so, I'm sorry.
There's a reference to a seawall at the base of the, base of the cliff.
That's what I read.
I do not have a date reference of when that was established, but I could tell you that it's likely been over 25 years because the development of new seawalls is not allowed.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Okay, thank you.
You all right?
Yeah, I have another one, but I'm trying to figure out. There was also a mention, and I'm not sure if this was for this property or one close to it, but on page 25, Mr. Kimbrell's letter, the last paragraph states that Becky Morfit and previous owner of his property, there was a previous building permit that was denied, and I'm not sure is that on the same lot? What's the history of that?
Yes, yeah, there was a Luba appeal that did get denied for construction on that site. That, however, was prior to our existing code and standards. And that information in a little more detail can be provided through the Planning Commission packet in Exhibit I. So our current code, our current regulations don't apply, or were not in effect at the time that that Luba decision was made.
Okay. And another question? Okay. And on page 27, Becky Morfit's letter, number one, topography states that it's not current and must be. She also questions stormwater drainage, and so can you tell us a little more about that? Like, how is this storm?
Yeah, so the appeal tonight is based upon the geotechnical analysis. I have not received information, and per 1747, it does not require me to analyze the stormwater, just the topography and the location of the structure.
So the stormwater would be looked at though, like during site planning?
Through the building permit process and be required to be mitigated under the standards that Public Works has.
Thank you. I'm just trying, also, if I could continue. I'm also trying to figure out the difference between the maps on page 61 and 62 and 60. You ran through that pretty fast, so if you could back up?
Yeah. So, the map on packet page 61 is the combined coastal hazard erosion zones that has the transparency that, it doesn't show up too well in my printed packet right here, but it shows the LiDAR underneath those hazard erosion zones. The code requires the Director to consider the line between the active hazard zone and the high hazard zone when determining the location of the bluff. The map found on packet page 62 is strictly just the coastal hazard erosion zones being depicted, and the map on page 63 is the layer of just the 2009 LiDAR contours.
So I'm, if I could keep going here. So I'm still, and then there's the 90, I suppose that's 90-foot, which is what you're assuming the top of the bluff is?
That, that is what the Director determined, yes, and the Planning Commission upheld.
Okay, and so, just in looking at the maps, maybe the one where they're all, 61, I guess, we'll try to include them all. So where was your, where's the measurement from? I see the 90, but just can you walk us through how, how that decision is made by looking at the map?
Well, I did a site visit as well. It is densely vegetated, so it was difficult to go out to bluff's edge and determine exactly where that is at. The best technical data that we have on file is the LiDAR and then the 2004 Priest data. The Priest data was done as a, I believe it was, the whole Oregon coast was done under a contract with the Oregon State. So, the, as you can see, I think that maybe packet page 63 may show it best where you see that the elevation of 90 feet on the northern property line kind of follows with the topography of the sites to the north, and then it jumps and the majority of the property is shown here at about 89 to 90 feet. The topography that was shown on the site plan shows the bluff edge at 100 feet based upon the information from the geotechnical analysis. And therefore, based upon the information that I had with the site visit and the maps, as well as the proposed project, I determined that the 90 feet was appropriate. As you can see, our topography doesn't show 100-foot elevation on it.
So it doesn't reach that height?
On our data and our maps, it doesn't show that it reaches 100-foot elevation.
So 90 feet is at, at the bluff's height, highest. Okay, so then how do you, okay, so that includes that, what is it, 60?
60 times the annual rate of erosion?
Plus five. How does that factor into all?
Oh, yeah. Sorry.
I also have a, I'll side question on that.
I'm trying to pull up the geotech report. I did not print those 144 pages.
I don't blame you.
Okay. Um. All right. That I had already grabbed it, I apologize. It's loading. The. I have, oh, I do have it right here. So, the annual erosion rate as determined in the report.
Point two feet.
Is 0.2 feet a year. Multiply that, and then you add what we call a psychological setback, which is the purpose of that additional five feet, so that you hopefully have an additional 10 or 15 years beyond that, that 0.2 feet that is identified. And so that came to a setback of 17 feet.
That's a setback of 17 feet.
Mm-hmm.
From what line on your?
Well, that, that is what's being appealed this evening.
So 17 plus five feet, isn't it?
No, the 17 includes that five feet. So it's 12.
16 times 0.2 is 12, plus five is 17. Hi, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, so let me just clarify that really the question at hand that is, where is the bluff? Isn't that, after all the staff report you gave, that's what the issue is about establishing, whether it's at 90 or 100? 90 is the altered and 100 is the bluff?
Correct, correct.
Let me, let me go to counsel.
I think something we're wrestling with is the, the maps you show don't show the location of the proposed dwelling, so we can't really see on these maps where that 17-foot line would be. I believe it shows up on the original engineering report, which was, we had to click on another link to get to that.
In Exhibit I, yes, the site plans for the proposal, including all of the previous material considered by the Planning Commission, were there. It's still loading. I do have.
It's doing the same thing.
In the file here, a small print of our large site plan sheet that does show that. However, it would be found in that Exhibit I packet.
Is there any way that you can get it up on here so we all can talk about the same thing?
I had it, now I can't find it, now it's loading. This is grading.
Which one is this one?
These three numbers, if you can see those three numbers.
Yep, I can see them. Thank you. You can change whatever.
Not sure if this is very legible.
I think page ninety-eight shows the site plan with the depiction of the setback, including the hundred-foot and the ninety-feet. This is...
I was looking for it.
Planning Commission packet.
Here we go.
Okay, so as you can see here, there's a condition to meet the minimum setback from the bluff of seventeen feet. The construction of the structure is cantilevered eight feet. The code does allow cantilevering over as long as there is no footings or pilings within
So, my question is, with this, and I haven't looked at it, can you point to where that top of the bluff, the ninety or a hundred, is?
This would be the post-grading ninety-foot bluff edge.
Okay, so the cantilever part is just that little square in the front there?
This eight feet.
Eight feet. So how far back from the bluff is that, the seventeen feet top of the bluff?
So, the measurement is from the bluff edge to the piling.
Okay, so the cantilever doesn't count, okay.
And maybe I agree with our, I'm gonna move pages on you guys, sorry.
Before you do that...
Oh.
Oh, that's all right. Go ahead and then we can go back.
This one actually shows the setback.
Okay.
What page is that one?
That is page one oh two of the Planning Commission packet, Exhibit I.
Who drew the actual contour lines for this project?
The architects for the homeowner.
Based off of what? Based off of what information?
Oh, based off of the geological hazard reports information.
From the Planning Commission's?
This is what was submitted that is being appealed, yeah.
Didn't see anywhere in there that that was a hundred feet. There was no, I didn't see anywhere other than this that there was a hundred feet of elevation.
Correct.
Right. So, if the architect is writing a hundred and no other place shows a hundred feet of elevation, I don't know where they got that. The LiDAR map is from nineteen, I'm sorry, 2009, with, if we're going by two-point-two feet of erosion since 2009, that's two, that's two feet lost since ninety-nine. If you go, if you go off of the boring, that, the 1993, which shows that side elevation, that says ninety feet, and that's the really true only thing that I saw with a side elevation. And if you draw a line up from the steep side, it's about fifty, right? It is, it is about fifty. So if you take five and a half feet back from that, from that 1993 thing, now you're at forty-five feet from that. It's the only thing that I saw with a side profile of the bank with actual numbers. Now, it doesn't say that, you kind of have to imagine it. So, if we're using forty-five feet of depth minus the nineteen feet, ten inches, right? Because that's how deep the house is. So forty-five minus twenty feet is twenty-five feet, could be considered within that seventeen feet. But I, it's all pieced, you know, you have to draw string through everything.
So I would recommend that the council, if you, before deliberations, to take testimony and consideration from the appellants and the applicant. If there's any questions of the staff presentation, I'm happy to continue that.
Could I ask another question? I have one more question. Now, I'm a little confused, so I just want to follow what Counselor Hoagland was asking. So if we are to consider the two, the point-two feet annually times sixty years plus five for additional seventeen feet, is that still true based on that 2009? I mean, that's a difference of ten years. Is that what you were giving to?
If you took the 2009 map off of the packet that we have, I don't know where the starting point is, other than that one page on the submission from the Planning Commission, which was a 1993 map that showed a profile of the bank, and it showed, it only showed ninety feet. And even dipped off to the 1993 boring site, looked like it was below ninety feet. So if you use that, and then you've just, I'm just going off of an assumption of where the steep incline is, subtract from 1993 now, back point-two feet a year, then that would give a number of that. So I don't know, just making clear that there's no other place that we, I mean, our maps say, you know, not intended for use of, you know, this is just an assumption, you know, this is just, Lincoln City maps are not to be used for this defining purposes. But, I don't, even our maps don't say a hundred feet. So, I don't know how this drawing got the hundred feet. And it, obviously it would've been nice to have an overlay of everything as far as this map, that map, and that map, but we're not there, so.
So why don't we go ahead and keep taking testimony and listen, and we still can come back and ask the questions, because maybe the appellants have some of the information or others that you're talking about.
My question was of Lindsay, because she's making, she had made the determination based on the mapping, so I just want to know, is it the 1993, 2009, or 2019? And then we start the calculation of point-two feet annually for sixty years. Because right now, it seems like we are applying it ten years after that, and so we need to add ten years, or, you know, instead of it being times sixty years, it should be like times seventy years if we're basing it on maps that have already, you know, the actual land could have eroded that point-two feet per each year for ten years, then we should start where we start, not where, not ten years ago.
And what page is sixty-seven of the current packet? Who did that? Is that part of the architector, architecture drawing? On the, on tonight's packet, page sixty-seven, is a drawing with no name, and it's rather difficult to see, but...
That was submitted as a site plan with the building permit.
Written, drawn by the architect?
Same firm, correct.
So it's part of this, what we're seeing here.
Counselor Hinton, did you have a question, or was that more of a statement?
No, it's a question. I don't know which map or what timeframe we start that calculation from.
So the code...
So it is a question.
Yes. Seventeen forty-seven requires and has identified specifically the 2004 Priest data, as well as the 2009 LiDAR data. I do not believe that we've had any new LiDAR or aerial topography taken since then to be able to update our code and reference the new information. So we would use those as the requirement per the code.
Okay, but the calculation still doesn't work for me.
Is there a degree of which a bank is defined as a bank and not part of the lot? A degree of slope, per se?
No.
Do you know, is there same, same, is there, do we have a definition of, if it's more than fifteen percent of an inch degree, now you're on a bank? Or is it based on vegetation? Or is it based on, well, it looks like it's going down a little bit steeper over there? That's what we're, that's what you're asking us to do, is define that, look, that's, that starting point. And do they have enough to build, right?
Define the, and...
The starting point of the bank.
The location of the bluff.
From the street to the bank, right. That's what we're here.
Mm-hmm.
Correct. So, do we have a definition of bluff? In our...
We only have what the code has given us, and it doesn't...
Yeah, the issue is, you determine where the bluff is based upon the evidence that you've received. When you determine it, where it is, it's, that's where you measure the seventeen feet from. There was a prior case on this property. It's Johns versus Lincoln City, I believe, thirty-seven, Orlobo, won, and then there's an earlier case. In that case, there was a determination that the bluff was at ninety-eight-foot elevation. I'm not telling you that to say there's evidence it's at ninety-eight feet, but that's what the result of the evidence in that record led to. Here you've got two lines on the maps that are in the record, one at a hundred, one at ninety. You've also got some older LiDAR and Priest maps that we recognize, you know, are ten years out of date. And the allegations in this case include allegations that some of this data is out of date, so.
And to answer your question, Counselor, we do not have a definition of bluff in our municipal code.
Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
I would like to hear from the engineers. I'm seeing language in the, the engineering report that suggests, or says, that the bluff hasn't changed since 1993. So, we're really just fishing around here, I think, unless we hear...
And that's why if we could keep going, because there'll be opportunity for those folks to come forward and as you deem them qualified, you question. Counselor, did you have a question?
I just had a quick question. How often is a LiDAR actually done?
It's based off of orthophoto development, and so it depends on the budget, either at the state or at a county level, on when they could have a plane fly to do the detailed orthophoto that you can then establish the LiDAR data.
And who would order this to be done?
What's that?
Who would have this to be done?
Typically, either a state or a county, but it is something that...
Be done by the city?
The city could do. It is an expensive endeavor.
So we've had no need to do it since 2009, sounds like?
It's typically done like a census timeframe every ten or twenty years.
And what about the Priest maps?
The Priest maps was a state's survey study that was done in 2004. I'm not sure that the legislature has funded an additional update to that.
Thank you. We may be back. May we have the appellants' testimony, please? And this would be Ms. Morfit. Your testimony is limited to fifteen minutes, including rebuttal, but not including time answering questions from the council. And if you wish, you can reserve time for rebuttal. Is Ms. Morfit? Great.
Your Honor, we actually have two appellants, and I'm not, I thought this was consolidated, so I thought they would be doing it together. Have the appellants talked to each other, or?
Next would be, so I've got, the next one calling would be the other appellant after this testimony.
Okay. So you're, you've got appellants and the applicant is the other party, so the applicant gets fifteen minutes and the appellants get fifteen.
This is appellants, oh, and then the applicant.
They get a combination of fifteen minutes.
Two have to share that fifteen. I thought that's how this was proceeding. If I'm mistaken, then we'll, guess we'll just have to give the parties what the time they need, but...
Per the script, anyway, it says two distinguishing, one's the appellant and the other is applicant.
I think there's one appellate.
Yeah.
Let's just hear, okay?
We got the time.
Hello.
Can you introduce yourself, please?
My name is Whitney Morfit. My family owns the home at 2460 Anchor Avenue, across the road from the subject property. I'm representing my Aunt Becky Morfit, who is the current owner and could not be present at this hearing due to previous commitments in Colorado. My aunt is a retired civil engineer with over thirty years of geotechnical engineering experience. My family designed and built the home in the early seventies with the knowledge that a home could be built on the Hulinger property in the future. The house is situated, such a home across the street would have a minimal impact on our ocean view. Our objection in the nineties and now are that the house be structurally stable and not project out over the bluff area or cause undue stress to the existing bluff. The concern would be the safety of the general public from the debris falling down from the beach. We were also concerned about the aesthetics of a house projecting out over the bluff. It's nothing to do with our ocean view. The Hulinger site plan and building drawings would indicate they're attempting to build a home which is larger than the buildable area permits. The topography issues listed on Item One in my aunt's letter. They are, A, the topography of the geological hazard reports are for twenty-eight years old. B, based on the erosion of point-two feet per year, would mean the top of the bluff shown at the topography could be about five feet different. C, the topography and the LiDAR topography do not reflect the vertical and overhanging nature of the top ten to twenty feet of the bluff which can be visually seen at the site. D, for a high hazard zone, the topography in the report should be considered efficient and not meet with municipal code requirement. And E, it would also be prudent for the designer and owner to get current topography to verify what is being used, if the design is correct. Now, it could cause a stoppage of construction until a new design is prepared, reviewed, and approved. This could be costly. A removal of eight to ten feet bluff, which is Item Two of my aunt's letter. Section eight point eight, erosion control, page seventeen, section paragraph, section line of the geological hazard report states, quote, "Unless approved by HGSA, the bluff slope should remain undisturbed," unquote. HGSA does not address the site plan show permanent removal of a portion of the bluff which contradicts the report. B, the report does not address how this excavation, vegetation, removal impacts future erosion weathering or slipping of the bluff at the subject property or adjoining property as required by Lincoln City County Municipal Code, Chapter seventeen point four seven. C, the report does not address how it is to be performed. D, altercation of the bluffs, altercation of the bluff is important to address, as there is one theory, though that the altercation of the bluff by construction of the retaining law at the top of the bluff in the stairway on the property to the south is increased erosion of properties to the north. And E, the geological hazard report does not address the impact construction of the house or permanent removal of upper ten-feet of this bluff has an adjacent property. This is... This is required per Lincoln City Municipal Code, Chapter seventeen point four seven. Cut and fill slopes, section eight point nine of the report. A, the Hollinger site plan shows cut slopes in the erosion setback area transitioning the bluff removal to the adjacent properties. B, these slopes are steeper than two to one, as HGSA recommends. The hazard report does not address this. C, in addition, if the cutting slopes, the erosion setback line should transition from the seventeen feet from the existing bluff at the adjacent property lines to seventeen feet from the new bluff top. This is not what is shown at the Hollinger drawing and could impact pure locations and cantilevered distance. D, there has been some mention of retaining walls presumably in this area, but no details have been provided. And E, if retaining walls are to, are used, this could be hazardous condition. As erosion occurs, they would undercut and fall down the bluff. Will the city permit use of retaining walls in the erosion setback area? Section eight point ten, drainage. A, the report says roof and footing drain should discharge to the storm sewer. B, the Hollinger site map indicates that the drains run down the bluff and discharge to the beach, which would not comply with geological hazard report recommendations. And C, the geological hazard report should address this change and how it could impact the bluff. The report should provide recommendations on how the drain is constructed to minimize the bluff and slope damage during the construction in the future. In conclusion, there are numerous deficiencies per municipal code requirement in the geological hazard report that need to be addressed. We would like to see the report not approved and written, and rewritten, or an addendum, an addendum to the report to be prepared to address these deficiencies. Some general questions are, who determines where the bluff edge is? Was the accuracy of the location and the timeframe in respect to construction is, is done? B, is the city permitting new homes to be built that could potentially cantilever out over the bluff in the future? Is this variance in code that requires public hearing? And C, does the city permit modification to the bluff that could impact adjacent property? Is this variance in code that requires public hearing? Thank you for your time and allowing my family to present our concerns.
Great.
It wasn't too fast.
Pretty fast.
Any questions from Ms. Morfit?
I do, but I want to reserve it.
Thank you.
So, Your Honor, I, we do have two appellants and one applicant, so I think that was, that's five minutes. So I, I guess we'd need to call the other appellant and then give the applicant additional time, more than the fifteen. So that was five, that was about five minutes. So, give the applicant twenty minutes after we get fifteen minutes or whatever the next appellant needs.
Okay. And this would be Mr. Hollinger?
No, Mr. Hollinger is the applicant. The initial appellant. He didn't actually turn in in the first page of his appeal document, so his name isn't jumping out at me.
And?
Kimbrel. So, Kimbrel.
Where am I not getting? Okay. There it is. Thank you. Mr. Kimbrel is, do you want to make a statement, or?
Yeah.
Now would be the time.
Did you make your pass?
No, not yet.
I didn't know that there were seven. I don't know the difference between a counselor and a commissioner, so I'm short one, and I would have preferred to do this and show you these things. I was told by your audio video department that wasn't a likely thing to happen, because I have a DVD of all this. But anyway, so I, I have hard copies and lots of them, and I don't want to take too much of your time, but I would like to go through these.
So, Mr. Kimbrel, sir, you, you have, so then we're saying fifteen minutes, fifteen minutes?
Okay.
If you want to reserve any of that time for rebuttal somewhere down?
I, I don't think we need to rebut, these, this is strictly visual, and it will-
Okay.
-help answer some of the questions. I'd just like to say, you know, this process is new to us. I've lived in the country all my life, so I don't understand commissions and counselors and stuff, so that's some of the problem with getting us information. But you have in front of you a packet, and the only one that should concern you right now are the ones that are numbered. The ones that are numbered, to start off with, are number one. And if everybody has that, that's a view of the road, my lot to the left, and a tree that is been, was alive.
So, if, if I can interrupt you, and we'll-
I'm sorry?
If I can interrupt you-
Yeah.
One, you need to speak into the mic, so we can hear you, but the other is-
Is this one working?
It is.
Yeah, okay.
Now, if I can, you know, what you need to do is remember the criteria that was talked about, you know, the, you make your comments, talking about a substantive criteria that you're addressing.
Yes. Well, this is going to be where the bluff is.
Okay.
That's, that's kind of what we're talking about, isn't it?
Well, there are three-
Where's the bluff? Are, are they accurate in what they're saying, which I do not believe?
Okay.
Is the water being adequately addressed? And why doesn't somebody go out there and measure these things?
Okay.
Because I have.
Keep going.
Okay. The first, and I'm just going to do this pretty much by pictures. Number one is the lot. That tree is on the north part of my lot, that's adjacent to the north of the, the subject lot we're talking about. That tree sits on the bluff, and the distance between the road surface and the bluff is just several feet. Now, I'm not sure when that road was changed, but they took part of my front yard when they did it, and I suspect it may have something to do with previous falls, you know, loss of the bluff. Picture two shows a picture of that tree on the right side. It's dead now. It was alive twenty years ago, and is now dead because of erosion. And that is sitting directly north of my property, directly next to the road, and you can see that the, where it sits. And you can see the bluff edge there and the undermining of it. And that's picture two. Picture three is a little bit closer shot of that. It shows you the tree, the bluff, and the stuff that's fell off the bluff, which they're trying to call another bluff. So, that's two bluffs. Like I said, it's going to be fast. Picture four is a picture of the bluff. The right half of this is the property that we're talking about building on. The left half is mine. And you can see that there is a great deal of vegetation and undermining that. And as you move to the right on Mr. Hollinger's property, the bluff turns rapidly to the right, or, and that is shown more clearly in the fifth picture. That is the area, the bluff, that they want to excavate. And they're calling the area at the bottom of the bluff, another bluff, which I don't know whether it's their ninety-foot one or an eighty-foot one, but I've measured the distances there, and there are a lot. There, you know, it's fifteen, twenty, and on mine, thirty feet or more. And it's simple enough to do. You just drop a tape measure over the side. You can see the extensive undermining of the vegetation there. Again, on six, this is, shows it clearly again. The center where you see that little divot, that is a path that people take to go and look out at the ocean on that piece of property. Just to the, on the left side of that, it approaches my property, and the edge of the, the photograph is probably right at where the property line is. And again, you can notice that the bluff moves around a corner. Picture seven is some previous building done on the bluff. I'm not sure what it was. I suspect it was some sort of way to get off the bluff, but it's long since deteriorated, and it's probably from the early fifties or sixties. It's hard to know. Picture eight is a close-up of those structures, and you can see, you're not dealing with necessarily solid stuff. It's a lot of sand, and if you just touch it, it just crumbles. And this is another, picture nine is another close-up of that. Picture ten goes back up the bluff directly above those things, and perhaps a little bit to the south of it, in an area of the subject property. You can see the amount of undermining there is significant. It's hard to know really for sure, but it looks like it's several feet, one or two, maybe more. Number eleven is, again, more bluff. And just gives you an idea of the curvature as you move south along Mr. Hollinger's land. It curves rapidly around, and I don't know where they're measuring from. And as you can see in the discussion we had today, it's very unclear where anything is. Number twelve is you have to turn it upside, and it just shows you the distance, approximate distance, and an idea of just how fast and how much that's dropped. And I don't understand how you can create more land by cutting down six or eight feet in that, because it doesn't get you down to the slough that's at the bottom. And is that what they're calling the new, their new property line and where they measure from? I don't understand it. And I think sometimes some of these, some of you guys had trouble with it as well. Number, I guess we're up to fourteen, thirteen or fourteen. Anyway, there's some pictures of debris. This is a bit south of there. This is from other structures that have fell off the bluff. And that includes fifteen and sixteen. And they're all pretty straightforward. Number seventeen is another picture of the kind of erosion that occurs. That's not, it's not the immediate area, but that's kind of what happens to those areas. Now, you have a couple more pictures there you can look at, and they're pretty much the same thing. The next group of pictures is listed under twenty, and it goes from A to E. This is, this is concerning the water. This is, was shot two or three days ago. It's Kathy looking at the water at the base of the bluff. And the next series of pictures shows those retaining walls being undermined, and water running out of, out of them this time of year. And all of them, pretty much the same. All those are directly beneath my property and the Hollinger property. And number twenty-one, final thing, is that's several hundred yards south of our property. That's where that house fell in. And this is a critical landside and erosion area. And I believe that that property that he wants to build on is included. I don't know why someone can't go out there and measure these things. It, it doesn't make sense to me. They look at maps and stuff. It's all right there. You can just walk and, and it wouldn't be that hard thing to do. And I would hope, I really have to thank you guys for having this meeting, because at least I feel like someone is looking at this. And perhaps it's your city engineer who Kathy was able to talk to, and I've asked around. Sounds like a pretty stand-up person, and it would be good to have her look at these things and try to determine what's what. Now, I made attempts to get a geotech person to come out and look at this. I called somebody from the Portland area who I thought would be not involved in this area, and I told him what I wanted. He said for a couple hundred bucks an hour, he would look at it, maybe take them two or three hours. I sent him a check for six hundred bucks and sent it all, all the stuff to him. The next time I talked to him, he says, "Oh, that's the place. It's all about the view." That's what this guy told me. And I said, "Well, where does that come from?" He says, "Oh, I heard it. It's a rumor." I don't know what that's about, but it was real interesting to see. It just makes me think that there's a lot of incestual kind of work in this area, that the all lawyers and geotech guys and stuff, he says, "I do business with these people all the time." So, what do I, what do I do? I never got my stuff back. I didn't get my money back. I also contacted a lawyer I use for real estate problems, and he recommended a group from Newport. So I called him up, and I says, "You know, I have this problem." And they said, "Hmm, let's check." And it turns out that it's the same group that's working for Mr. Hollinger. So, I didn't get those things done. I would have liked to, but it just happened. So I decided, after spending a thousand dollars wasting on that stuff, that's what it cost me or more, that I'd bring these things in, show to you guys. And with Becky's very specific ideas about what was going on there, would help you guys make a decision, and maybe with the help of your city engineer, at least you're getting a different point of view on this. And I really appreciate that. Everybody else has been great, for the most part. I would have liked to know them about this six months ago, but I don't know how that works. I don't know how any of this worked. But anyway, that's pretty much all I have to say. I think the confusion about the numbers, I think it was very sloppy work. When I looked at the geotech report, I was very surprised. And it just seemed like so many things were unexplained. When it was done, who done it, whether it was ever checked again after a year, as it's supposed to be done. All this stuff is new to me. And hopefully, with this information, guys can come up with a, a good decision. I think that's probably about all I have to say today.
Okay. Questions? Yes?
Mr. Mayor, some of these photos with the houses on them, how close are they to the-
Those things, they're, as you move down south of there, these are kind of, there's a whole series on the, that are unnumbered. I just stuck them in there, because I, I shot them all, and then I paid them copies, and I ran up a three hundred dollar bill, copy and all this stuff. But they're really interesting. They just show you pretty much what goes on there. And I don't think unless you go down there and look for these things, you can see what happens to these homes that were built during the forties or fifties and are on the verge of falling in, and the kind of things that they do to prevent that. And it's, and from what I can understand, that creating obstructions or building stairs or even putting up retaining walls affects the adjacent properties significantly as far as increasing amount of erosion. And I have a hard time understanding how they can determine where that bluff is by looking at maps, and how can there be a second bluff? And also, the other thing about my property is, it sits about five or six feet higher than Hollinger's property. And it's, it's a shelf, and it goes out and then it drops down just before that tree again. And when that snaps off, the whole thing is going to go. And then the road's going to go. It's going to be dangerous. So, that's all I got to say.
Any other questions for Kimbrel?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Kimbrel, thanks for coming. I just wanted to be, I think I might be fine. I'm looking at a lot of documents. I think I might have found my answer. But I, I thought I saw somewhere that your address was twenty-four forty-
Yep.
-southwest anchor. So that's across-
I'm across the street.
That's the east side of the anchor.
Yeah.
You also own property on the, on the ocean side?
Yeah, the oceanfront one, and-
How much, how big a piece of property is that on the ocean side?
Boy, I think it's probably sixty by, you know, if you go out to the bluff, I don't know, twenty, thirty.
And, and there's no building there? Your, your bill, the building that you own is on the-
I mean, I was surprised that they were going to build on this, and I, so the first thing came, "Wow, wow, I can build on that." But I, I don't have to. And the thing about this being, something about the view, this house, as far as affecting my view, is probably only going to take ten, fifteen degrees out of, I have wide open view. It's going to go like that. Then you're going to have this three-story, whatever you want to call it, that doesn't fit in the neighborhood. If a guy would have came by and talked to us and said, "Hey-" If the guy would have came by and talked to us and said, hey, you know, I want to build a little cabin, something that fits in the neighborhood, it might have been a different thing. But this is just an attempt to, I mean, if he gets to build this house, it's going to be worth a ton of money. And he didn't pay for the land for making a ton of money. A lot there costs 400,000 to build a building.
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir.
Yep, thank you.
All right. Now we'll go to the applicant. And if we have the applicant testimony, please. Your testimony is limited to 15 minutes.
20.
20 minutes. So since we had two. And that includes rebuttal. If you want to reserve any time for rebuttal, let us know, or wait and see.
Hi.
You can gamble. You can gamble.
Well, good evening. Thank you for your time in conducting this special meeting to deal with this issue. It's a lot of work, I know, and not always very gratifying. My name is Chris Minor. I'm an attorney. I work in Newport. Let me assure you that there's no great conspiracy between all the lawyers and all the engineers in the country to prevent anybody from being heard. In fact, I can assure you that people are very happy to get work. And if there weren't any, if there weren't two sides to every question, there, there wouldn't be as much work, I suppose. I represent Mr. Lee Hollinger, who is here beside me. He has hired a most extraordinary geotechnical engineer, Mr. Doug Glass, who will testify very shortly. And I think he can answer many of the unanswered questions. For example, there was a question, why didn't somebody measure such and such? Well, he did. And he can explain how he arrived at the elevations and, and many of the great unanswered questions. I did, I did want to make it clear that some of what I've heard is, is basically speculation and, and arguments just kind of dredged up from the emotions. It's not relevant that there was a prior case where a building permit was denied. Different ordinance, different, different facts, different plans. The state of Oregon and the municipalities of the state have developed a plan whereby they recognize that there are geologic hazards. They also recognize that they cannot possibly have the staff to instruct an applicant in every case how to build it and what they should specifically do to avoid geologic hazards. And so, most cities have adopted ordinances such as yours where the responsibility is placed on someone with geotechnical engineering abilities to evaluate the situation and make recommendations. And the criteria is that the, the evaluation and the recommendations need to cover all the bases that you've identified in your ordinance. And that's really what we're here to decide tonight. I, I will say a little bit about Mr. Glass. Mr. Glass is with H. Schlicker and Associates, and I go back a long way with that firm. Herb Schlicker was around back when I was in the early stages of practicing law, and he was the guy. He's gone now, but his firm is the firm. And I think that it would be fair to say, although I think it embarrasses him, that Mr. Glass is probably the premier guy doing this kind of work in the state of Oregon. He's a licensed hydrogeologist. He's a land use planner. He has a MS degree in geology. He's a registered geologist. He's a certified engineering geologist, and he holds those licenses in the state of Washington as well, not only Oregon, but also Washington. He knows his stuff, and I think he can answer your questions. I'll get out of the way here.
Great.
Good evening, folks. My name's Lee Hollinger, and I'm the owner of the property at Subject. I'd like to introduce Mr. Glass.
Good evening. I'd like to hand out some testimony. There's been four letters. My name's, by the way, my name's James Douglas Glass. And I'm the principal engineering geologist at HG Schlicker and Associates. We're located at 607 Main Street, Suite 200, Oregon City. And I am here to address some of the issues that have been brought up tonight. The written testimony that I'm providing with, to you addresses all four letters that you should have in your packet, two from the Kimbrels and two from Morphet. We appreciate their input. Because we're short on time, I will just address, or read into the record, item number four that's being handed out. I'll wait till you get that. The reason I'm addressing that particular letter is it, it is the most thorough, and it comes closer to addressing criteria than the others. So topography, that's been quite an issue here tonight. So let me explain something to you about the difference in elevations that you're hearing tonight. When we send a surveyor out to a site like this, in order to save some money, we have them do what's called assume an elevation. In other words, they go out there and they say, this place right here is 100 feet. And they base everything off of that. So it's either going to be higher or lower. And that's what we had them do on this site. They assumed an elevation of that bluff top of 100 feet. Okay? So that's why you're seeing that discrepancy there. So if we dig down 10 feet as proposed, we're down at 90 feet. When we dig down to that 10, that 10 feet, we're further out, and we actually gained space. And it's a pretty common way to deal with shallow lots on, on the bluff.
Are you gaining space at square footage?
We're gaining space in the sense that we're, we're, the bluff is now further away from, in this case, the eastern property line. That bluff edge. So just to go through Becky Morphet's issues that she brought up, number one, topography. I'll, I'll go through these quickly. A, light hours frequently more accurate to ground-based topographic surveys due to access issues. Steep slopes and bluff edges can be dangerous to survey, and we've found sometimes that surveyors don't get as close as we'd like them to. But generally, they're just sticking the rod out there, and the other guy is shooting. B, the topography as shown on figure five of our December 2015 report, that's this report here. Entitled Engineering Geological Hazards Investigation for Tax Lot 1900, Map 711, 22 BD, 2461 Southwest Anchor Avenue, Lincoln City. So you have a copy of that. Look at figure five. That topography that's shown on that is still accurate to this day. We've been out there. We located the eastern property corners. We strung a tape out to measure it off, and then perpendicular to that, we took measurements to the bluff. If you turn to the photos, at the end of that, what I just handed out to you, you're going to see a series of photos there. The first photo dated 2/27/02 was a photo taken from the beach, looking up at the bluff site. That's the area that we proposed to develop. The next photo is 1215, 15. So you can see between '02 and 15, a lot of vegetation's grown up. It's really helped this site out. The erosion rate is very low now. If you look at the next photo, you'll see my tape strung from property corner to property corner. And you'll notice that one of those property corners, the southern one, is in somebody else's asphalt. And that's what we measured from to see, is this topography still accurate? And if you turn to the next photo, which is 4119, you'll see that there's even more vegetation. So that kind of gets us into a talk about the, the erosion rate and what it really means. But I'm not sure that I want to get to that quite yet. Let me, yeah, I will do that. So, 1B, the topography is shown on figure five of our report of December 15, of December 2015. We physically measured distances to the bluff edge from the east property line. We revisited the site in April 2019 and confirmed that there had been no significant change. The site has not been eroding at 0.2 feet per year recently. 0.2 feet per year is the long-term average annual erosion rate. Whereas, and I think most of you have walked this beach enough to know that erosion is, tends to be episodic. Tend to get a lot of it at one point in time, and then slows down, or you get none for a while. Maybe you get a shallow landslide or what have you. So 1C, again, this is in reference to Becky Morphet's letter, her July 31st one. When topographic maps are drawn, they use various methods for establishing the lines of equal elevation. Typically, this creates a steeply sloping configuration where near verticality may exist. That's because they shoot points, and then they average them. And you run it through typically a Krieging process in a computer, and it draws the ISO lines, the lines of equal elevation. As a result, the topographic portrayal is not incorrect, but rather inherent in topographic surveys. The topographic survey was sufficiently accurate for the needs of a geologic hazards report. D, all topographic maps are approximate. HGSA has visited the site since the 1980s. Matter of fact, we have been to this site and written stuff for it in '88, '89, '91, '98, '02, '04, and 15, and now 19. We're confident that the information portrayed in that topographic map that's in our report is accurate, certainly to the needs of a geologic hazard report. The upper bluff verticality as expressed on the topographic map, we are now on E, is accurate as depicted by the Oregon Registered Professional Engineer that produced it. We have subsequently confirmed its accuracy with field measurements. Please see the attached photo, which you've already looked at. F, the topography of the site has not significantly changed since the original survey. This is primarily the result of an increase in vegetation growth protecting much of the slope from erosion. I realize that there's been erosion north of the site, north of Mr. Kimball's property. That is not the property we're proposing to develop. If, if you go up and down the Lincoln City bluffs, you will see various amounts of erosion, places that are in dire need of, of moving the house back or having the house underpinned. We're not developing one of those sites. We get to go in fresh on this. Okay. Two, effective permanent removal of upper 8 to 10 feet of bluff. A, the proposed cutting of the bluff slope will not have a detrimental impact on the bluff stability as it will result in some unloading of the slope, which increases the factors of safety for bluff slope stability. HGSA, that is us, reviewed the proposed grading and construction and found it to be in general conformance with our recommendations. B, at the time that geologic hazards reports are prepared, there often is not a set of plans to review for conformance with the engineering geological recommendations. Therefore, HG Schlicker provides site-specific recommendations, these aren't just general recommendations you use anywhere, and later completes a plan review for conformance with recommendations. That is, we look the plans over, and we see, hey, do these conform to our recommendations or have they proposed something else that will work? Yeah. At that point, we write a letter. Grading on the subject site, when done properly, does not affect adjacent sites. HGSA addressed erosion and flooding potential in section 4.1, pages 9 and 10 of our December 2015 report. Preservation of vegetation and existing grade in the setback area as proposed is appropriate and necessary for site development and to protect the adjoining properties. The area to be graded will be protected with landscaping and hard surfaces for erosion protection. C, clearly, the proposed grading must be conducted with care and concern. This is to address her issue that there, there might be damage to adjacent properties. Damaging other people's property is a civil matter. If that happens, people have a civil course of action they can take. Grading contractors understand this, don't like court, and so they act accordingly. D, the claim that construction of the wall and stairway to the south has increased erosion simply is not accurate. The wall has prevented wind-driven rain, which can cause erosion from impacting the slope, and the stairway has prevented erosion caused by foot traffic on the bluff. Significant problem in certain areas of Lincoln City. E, the geologic hazard report has addressed all criteria for geologic hazards reports required by the city. We actually custom-write our reports for every jurisdiction we work in. We use their content standards as a guideline, and we go through it as absolute close as we can. And if you look at our table of contents and you look at the city's content standards, you'll probably see that, hey, these things match up pretty darn good. Three, section 8.9, cut and fill slopes. Cut slopes at the site will be native materials and are retained as appropriate. Cuts will need to meet all applicable codes and our recommendations for materials having given properties. Currently, the materials show that they can stand at near vertical angles. Look at the bluff. However, we recommend flatter cuts and retention where necessary. There will be no significant fills at the site. Four, section 8.10, or section 8.10, drainage. Ideally, all drainage would be discharged to the city's stormwater system. We all know, in the coastal towns, they've been told for a long time that we don't have great stormwater systems. However, this is not always the best method. At this site, stormwater originating from the roof and street-level grade could be discharged to the city's stormwater system. And footing drains and stormwater from the lowest level, that is, the level below the street, the daylight basement, could be piped down the slope and discharged to an energy dissipator on the slope above the seawall, or it could be captured and pumped to street level using a sump pump. We don't like sump pumps generally, but, you know, we'll use them. Electricity goes out, they don't always work so great. Although we have, although HGSA has designed these bluff slope stormwater pipe systems, it's best to have them designed by a civil engineer. We, we've designed those things, but that's not really our call in the world as engineering geologists. That's really the value of the civil engineer. So, and with that, I conclude my testimony, and I'm open to questions.
So, questions?
I just have a simple one on page three of your, of your handout. And down towards the bottom to, under the Morphet letter 1D, and you say that you've visited many times since the 1980s to this site. I was just curious why?
Various people have wanted to develop this lot. And they get so far in the process, and the reality of the dollars of putting in a foundation like this, like we've recommended, come to roost. Yeah. And they tend to move on. It's also changed hands a number of times. So this is the first time Wes Johns, back decades ago, looked at it, got to Luba, had an, had an issue there, lost, I believe. It, it probably came back to the city. I don't know if there was anything, but at that point in time, Wes Johns, he was a developer, and there was a problem with developments. I think that was the 1980s recession. And I think he lost his shorts.
Okay. I was just curious because that's what I was thinking your answer would be. But I'm just familiar with another lot, not there, but in another part of the city where it was dug down like that. And then when they discovered how much it would cost to actually build the foundation because you can't hit the rock to, you know, to anchor it, then now it's just a hole has been for years. And it's not a, it's not aesthetically, it's not okay, but it's also worrisome for all the other obvious reasons. So I was just kind of, just want to make sure this is?
At this particular site, they, from just a couple feet down and on, they are in coastal marine terrace formation. So it is, it is rocky enough to form coastal bluffs. So it's a much stronger material than just a simple soil.
So did you drill down? Do you know that yourself?
Yes, we did drill.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
Just, Mr. Glass, on the, the last point about this stormwater drainage, is it typical or unusual to drain directly into the ocean, or how does that work here?
Well, I think if you walk the bluffs in Lincoln City, you'll see a lot of Well, I think if you walk the bluffs in Lincoln City, you'll see a lot of flex tube that's been dangled over the edges. It doesn't perform very well. There's better ways to do it. Is it common to do it? Yeah, it's common to do it. It's more expensive than discharging to the street. Anything to understand, most people do not have daylight basements, so they just discharge either to splash blocks, which is probably the most common thing you see, or occasionally they'll discharge to a dry well, you know, a hole in the ground that's filled, you dump your gutters into, which we generally don't like to see, especially adjacent to bluff sites, because it charges groundwater, which contributes to instability. So, yeah.
So, in this case, where you say the water from the lower, from below-street level could be piped down the slope, and what does it mean to be discharged to an energy dissipator? Where does that end up?
The energy dissipator would be on the slope above the seawall, and typically, it's rocks. Just something that will break up, it's really just to break up the energy.
Another question I had was, and pages and pages of documents, somewhere I saw a reference that during the actual digging of the foundation and the sinking of piles or whatever it is you do to stabilize, that sort of, representatives from Schlicker would be on-site?
Yeah, we, in order for them to get the permit, they're going to have to say that we're going to follow everything the geologist has said, and one of the things that we say is, hey, we have to be there to see construction of these piling. They're auger cast, that is, you drill down, you set either a wide flange beam in like an H pile, or you set a rebar cage in there, and your back filled with concrete. Code requires that. Not your city code, but building code.
That's a state building code.
That's a building code that, yeah, that's in the commercial code, because the piling are not standard residential.
Any questions on the side? What I did, I did notice that there was a series of emails that asked you or your firm on this, which bluff, the lines on the map, and the ninety-edge bluff is the altered?
Yes.
And the hundred is the, in essence, existing, current one?
Yeah.
And that was to you?
Yes.
So, what I want to make sure. Okay?
I have an app on my phone that is an altimeter, and would tell me how high I am. Why don't you, don't you, why do you make up a number?
Well, I have altimeters too, and I have an app on my phone, and it's okay for certain things, but I wouldn't want to use it where it's something I'm stamping. I mean, it might be fine for certain applications, but not for this.
All right. Good questions?
Thank you for hearing us.
Thank you. Thanks very much. All right. At this time, we'll take testimony in support of the appeal. Each witness may have up to three minutes. So, this would be in support of the appeal, that means the person testifying believes the planning commission decision was incorrect and should be overturned. So, anybody that wants to, since I don't know from sign-up, you need to decide, you know, in support of the appeal, then come forward. Yes?
Just for the record, I don't think there's a lot of difference, but just for the record, I would take two objections.
Okay, so noted, counsel says, doesn't think they're standing. So, introduce yourself, if you will.
My name is Kevin Colfield. I live here in Lincoln City. I've heard a lot here. There's a lot of disinformation. I think more relevant recent information is necessary. Once that cliffside is disturbed, all bets are off, and I hope there's a plan in place for somebody other than the taxpayers to pay to clean the pile of trash up when this thing falls onto the beach. It's an environmental travesty in the making. Don't kowtow to one person, one single person, that knows nothing of the countless people who use this area for a lookout. A lookout should have been bought by the city and named Sharkfin Lookout or the Nell Scott Lookout. The city needs more place for tourists to enjoy our wares, not buildings that require variances, and this is clearly going to need them. Heard a lot of creative measurements. How many of these special allowances is the city going to approve, so a few people get treated better than the rest of us? There are better lots, more suited to building, not this minuscule sliver of land. This is our backyard, all of us opposing this thing. Put yourself in our places and take a step back. So far, this idea has not gotten much publicity, but I can guarantee you that once this hits the paper and people find out, it's going to fly like a rock. I've mentioned this to other people, and I got the WT, you're kidding, look. We don't want this, the city doesn't need it, it's going to bite back. What's the point in bending over for this proposal? A few dollars in taxes, some transient room fees possibly, and try to tell us, any of us here, this won't be a VRD. This is a can of worms, nasty unpredictable worms that are going to pop up, and then it's going to be too late. And I have an addendum, an unfortunate addendum. We all know what happened in Encinitas. Three dead after cliff collapse in Southern California. The beach erodes, it's unpredictable. This thing is not, is not going to fit in with the neighborhood, and I would suggest to the council right now, before any more of these things come up, that we go, you go around and look. This place could have been bought by the city, and there could be a picnic table there, and a little lookout for people to park. There are dozens of people that use this spot to look at the ocean and to take pictures. It doesn't need a house. Thank you.
Thank you. And Carol, I'm assuming you, do you want to testify as well?
I can just turn my letter into your light. Carol Colfield, Lincoln City. Thank you, Mayor Anderson, council members, for your attention to this important agenda. This proposal for private residence is selfish, ill-conceived, and no thought has been given to the historical nature of the area. This location should be a public lookout, not a private house, that is not going to fit in with the feel of the neighborhood. Many times, when I go around that corner, there's surfers sitting there, looking at the ocean, people stopping, taking pictures, and the adjacent property that Mr. Kimball owns, people stop there, they sleep in their cars sometimes, and it, you just, it's just been there for years. My parents owned the house across the street since the early 70s, and that spot has always been a favorite spot for surfers to stop. How many times will our road be blocked by self-righteous workers and heavy equipment? How many workers are going to be using our private property and our driveways to build a house that nobody wants there? Where are the building materials going to be stored? If it's anything like we have experienced with Olivia Beach, it's going to be a full-blown takeover by people who assume they have the right to do whatever it takes to accomplish their task. Anchor 24th that I live on and coast are narrow roads, not meant for even the traffic we have now. So many times over the years, we have seen homes close to erosion areas ensure the view is nice while it lasts, but soil erodes, and that is exactly what's going to happen once this cliffside is unnaturally disturbed. Thank you for your attention.
Great, thank you very much. Anyone else wish to speak in support of the appeal? Seeing none, we'll then move to in opposition to the appeal. Each person will have three minutes, and again, opposition to the appeal means that the person testifying believes the planning commission's decision was correct and should be upheld or affirmed. And I have one more person. Malaya, Melinda?
Malaya.
Oh, I'm sorry. But otherwise, I've gone through the names of people who had signed up, so I know I've got you all. But if anybody wants to do testimony in support of, or in opposition of the appeal, seeing none, then, let's see, we'll take neutral testimony. This is opportunity, neutral testimony.
Mr. Mayor, I'm wondering if Mr. Hollinger missed his opportunity?
Yeah. We'll have time for rebuttal. So, let me get through all the, there may be someone waiting out there. Next, we will hear testimony from government agencies. Now, now is the time, each appellant's rebuttal. I don't think anybody reserved any time as far as the appellant's. So, no rebuttal, but the applicant did, if you'd like to come forward. You have five minutes.
For the record, again, my name is Lee Hollinger. I'm the owner of the property. And the applicant for a building permit to build a beautiful home on that property. When I mention a home, it's going to be just that, where I'm going to live seven days a week, rest of my life. As mentioned before, this view is unlike any other on the Pacific Northwest. It is beautiful. And I meet people from all around the world that come and visit, watch the surfing competitions, talk, and just love that property. I want to keep it open for all people coming by for coffee, for lunch, and take pictures. So, this is not a selfish motive of my part. I want to build a home there. I fell in love with Lincoln City when I first moved here in the early 1980s out of college. So, this has been my destination for many, many years. When I found this home, this land, five years ago, I thought, is it possible to build a home on there? And I did about a year of research on that and found the best geological engineer in the entire state. We talked about it, thought about it, said it doesn't have to be a mansion, just even just a surf shack, something little. It is just beautiful. So, whether this particular house is built, whether it's, we keep the bluff where it is, it doesn't matter. I'll build something there. It may be a little tiny, tiny house, but something's going to go there. This is my land, and I love it there, and I want to share it with anybody who wants to come by and enjoy it as well. So, I don't come here as an outsider, like a lot of my neighbors are. They don't live there. They're vacation homes. They rent them out, albeit they're watching over their homes, whether back in Colorado or living over in Gaston. Folks, and I love my neighbors, they've gotten on great, and I'm sorry they're going to lose part of their ocean view. They're going to, and I'm sorry about that, but I just ask the council to please respect your own ordinances, laws, rules, regulations, because we follow them for five years now. We've crossed every T, dotted every I, we played by the rules. Just asking you to please enforce your own ordinances, laws, and regulations. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. All right. Let's see, while I've got you there, Mr. Applicant, does the applicant wish to waive submission
So, under the statutes, after the close of the hearing and the close of the record, the applicant has the opportunity to submit final written argument. So, counsel, you're saying you're not wishing to submit final written argument?
Okay.
So, if you close the hearing and the record, the answer is, it's waived?
No, okay. And then, at this time, I'd entertain a motion, motion to close the hearing and the record.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move, we close the record and the hearing?
Second.
We have a motion to close the record and the hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close with a nay. Hearing none. So, actually, everything's closed now. The hearing is closed, the record's closed. Now, we're going to deliberate, and we haven't come to a conclusion yet.
I'm just curious, if you have any input? At this point, the hearing and the record is closed. There'll be no new evidence.
Yeah, so no new information. What we have of the record is it. Right. So, let's see, Mr. Attorney, does the city attorney have any comments concerning legal issues raised during these proceedings, instructions on the applicable law, or legal advice concerning the application of the law to the evidence of record?
Usually, I like to talk about what not to consider, and you had some testimony about, you know, you'll see this in the newspaper, or the city should buy this property for public land lookouts. It's not consistent with the neighborhood. You know, there's a complaint about another developer in the area. All that is irrelevant to the criterion for the approval of this. You know, you are dealing with 1747, and those kind of criterion and consideration are not in there. So, I would, whatever decision you make, you should probably say you're not basing your decision on the threat of someone going and trying to give you bad press at the newspaper, or, you know, whether or not you should buy this. It's not relevant to this. Counsel had mentioned that certain people didn't have standing. Our code doesn't allow, it does allow parties that are notified to come in and testify, and so we're generally not going to exclude evidence. We will, however, reject prejudicial information that is irrelevant. So, I think we can protect the parties from that kind of information. I don't think there's much here that you need me for. I think the staff report identifies that there are really just a few issues brought out. One would be allegations by the appellant's that the report is not complete enough. Mostly, that's about the passage of time, and that you heard the appellant's, or rather, the applicant's representative come forth and talk about what they've done and how they did that analysis. The one interpretation issue is, I think, the only decision that's really before you, and I think that's, is the bluff at the 100-foot line, or is the bluff at the 90-foot line? And that's the difference between the existing bluff and the altered bluff. And so, I think that's the important interpretation for you to make. And I think I would spend my time talking about that, and what you think the code meant when it used the language that it uses. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. I can't give you new facts. Lindsay, as well, can address things that are in the record, but we can't give you any new facts during your deliberation.
So, Mr. Appicello, one of the other things that I came up with, or a question, was, so let me know, I would think this would be in the record, so I don't mean to, but does our code address altered, in this case, altered bluffs? You know, it, in essence, we have two bluffs talked about. I'm going to the, remembering on defining height of buildings and stuff, and it was always clear of where you started from. and it was always clear of where you started from, regardless of infill or compacted dirt or whatever.
Remember that what this is doing is saying, you know, they have a plan, and the plan shows this is the piling that will support the house. This is where we're going to dig down and put the footing in and pour the concrete, what he testified to. This is our footing. That has to be set back, at least by the calculation in the record, 17 feet from the bluff. So, that's all that has to happen, is that has to be 17 feet from where the bluff is. It doesn't say that there can't be grading in there, because that's not a footing. There could be alteration of that area, but the setback is calculated from the bluff. And the only issue really, I see, is the existing bluff or the altered bluff. And the code talks about how do you determine bluff? You look at the existing maps and the existing LiDAR and the existing surveys. It doesn't say, look at the proposed grading plan. So I think that's only about where the footing is set back to. It's not about what grading there might be. It's about where that first footing is.
Other questions from council? Any clarifications, thoughts, deliberation?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, now, the hearing closed, but we did hear a question from Mr. Kimball. Does the city engineer have a role in this? Does the, does the planning director hear from the city engineer in assessing the?
At this point, the hearings, the hearings closed, the record's closed, and of course, all applications are processed through the normal process, which includes all departments.
Well, that's my question.
But we don't have any specific testimony or documents from the city engineer in this record.
Other comments, thoughts? So, the decision of the planning director and the planning commission was the bluff at 90 feet. And that, the appeal is appealing that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
What would be a motion that we would like to uphold the planning director's decision?
That would be the motion to deny the application and approve... Oh, no. Yeah. Motion to approve the application and deny the appeal. This affirms the planning commission decision.
I would like to make that motion.
Okay. Second. You'd make the motion to approve the application and deny the appeal?
Correct.
And we have a, oops, where'd our recorder go?
Oh, wait. Whoops.
We have a second from Counselor Parsons. So... Discussion? Since we have a... Well, actually, if there, you know, we don't have, we're not voting yet, so that's the motion on the table. Any discussion regarding that? And we can do it, you know, we're being recorded, so she doesn't have to be here. Do you have a question?
Mr., no, just a comment that I was impressed by the engineering report that was received and approved by the planning director, and I heard no testimony to counter that. So I'm pretty clear how I'm going to vote.
You know, and I did hear, or was thinking about, the concern is always on coastal construction is erosion and facilities falling onto the beach and the public then being handicapped with cleaning it up. And I don't think our code or we have any provisions of requiring something of that nature. But I can see the concern of citizens. I would hope homeowners' insurance would have such a thing, and certainly that it doesn't happen. But that's typically the public's concern, because the asset is the applicant's. From what I can see, we don't have any of those kind of provisions to put that requirement. City recorder, there was a motion to approve the application and deny the appeal, and it was seconded by Counselor Parsons. And any further deliberation? Counselor, you look like you're...
Got my mouth open, but I'm not sure what I'm going to say. I don't know, I'm kind of waffling back and forth because I think the bluff is what the bluff is as it is when it's measured and not after it's been changed. So, I'm kind of stuck there. But our ordinances don't give us any direction there, do they?
Correct. That was my question, the altered, yeah.
Yeah, so maybe we ought to put that on our list to think about. So I have nothing.
Any other questions, comments, deliberation, thoughts? Okay, roll call, please.
Anderson?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Ogland?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
And Parsons?
Yes.
Motion carries.
So let's see. The decision may be appealed to the land board, Land Use Board of Appeals, by filing a notice of intent to appeal within 21 days of the date the final order is mailed by the city. And we direct the staff, direct staff to prepare the final order in conformance with the city council's decision this evening.
And we'll bring it to you at our next opportunity.
Next, okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
In, to prevent future disputes, would it be something that we could ask staff to see what a study would be to determine the entire coastline bluff of the city? To try to determine what that would be? You know, to update our maps or what have you, so that way?
Boy, I wonder if that's practical.
I understand, I understand.
City manager?
I'm still going to ask.
I think the question that you would ask of us is, can we bring back something that tells you what it would cost to do that?
That is what I'm asking. That is what I'm asking.
Or, or if we can find out about the next Lindar.
Right. Regarding updating our GIA.
It's been 10 years.
Okay, that'd be good. All right. With that, any additional comments from citizens present? Hearing, come forward. We can't, we can't get you up there. You've got to come forward with the... Don't, don't start. Don't, don't start, because we can't get the recording.
I just want to know how, do you tell us how to win that appeal process is and how that works?
We send out a...
And when do we get it? Because a couple of these things, we didn't get them on time, and we had to make very quick decisions. So I'd like to know exactly the process, when you mail them out, and when we have to make those, so...
The council will be presented with a final order. They will review the final order, the written order. If they approve it, then we'll mail it out to you. And that could happen as early as a week from today or possibly three weeks from today, depends on the...
The next, the next council meeting?
Next council meeting, okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
All right. Any comments from councilors? We meet again on Monday? Okay? Call it adjourned. Thank you for this evening.